All right, we are back on record at 12:52. Next item is discussion of fiscal '26 budget. Now, Deborah, if you don't mind, walk through the assumptions that kind of builds the whole budget from a revenue and expense standpoint, talk about our major initiatives, talk about our fiscal '26 budget, and then there's a couple of slides on future revenue conversations that came out of the Beach Ad Hoc Preservation Committee that we'll take up at the end or potentially at the next workshop if we need one. Deborah?
Thank you. What we tried to do here is we met with the department heads and committees to try to determine the needs and requests and suggestions, and we compiled all the information together. We have included everything that was requested with the exception of one thing from a meeting that we had this morning with the State A-Tax Committee. I have made some points that I will reiterate during this meeting so that we can make sure that everyone's on the same page because those conversations had, were had, in committee meetings. So I want to make sure that if you've heard it before, I apologize because you might hear it again. But we want to start with our assumptions, and the first one is the revenue. So we have tourism revenue based on 98% of the most recent 12 months. We're factoring in the fact that we will get, start receiving more money from the Airbnb. This is also considering how we are currently trending. We are projecting 95% for hospitality. For business licenses, we are projecting 94% of the most recent 12 months, factoring there will be some licenses fees gained from Airbnb as well. For building permits, we're going back down to 85%, trying to be conservative considering there was a huge bump in FY '25, but we are not sure if we'll see that same construction pattern in FY '26. Residential rental licenses at 90% and all other revenues at 1% to 2%. We're anticipating expenses to-
Deborah, can we stop there for just a second? Because these first two bullets are such drivers of what we're doing. And John, I know last meeting or meeting before, there was a little bit of conversation on tourism. We had been at 95%. Why weren't we doing 100? If you look at our revenue for the last five years coming out of COVID, '21, '22, '23 were all-time record years for revenue. On a tourism basis, '24 took a little bit of a dip, and '25, Deborah, to your point, seems to be leveling out and maybe even a little bit of an upturn potentially. So just wanted to stop because, again, these first two bullets are such big drivers of the budget and the net and what we have to spend. Is there questions or comments or concerns on any of it?
I've got some comment on the business licenses, and I'd like us to, and I don't know if we do it here, but, you know, our business licenses, I think our businesses are doing quite well. I think they're growing and have been growing for the last several years. I think we're seeing the vibrancy on the island. But our revenues have gone from 2.3 million in 2023. We have a forecast of 2.2 million, and we're budgeting 2.1, which to me just doesn't feel like it's tracking with what's going on on the island as far as growth and whether it's the Harris Theater, whether it's the resort, whether it's the front beach businesses. And I think, you know, we've talked about this a number of times, and I'd like the council to take this up as quickly as we possibly can for discussion and maybe some action is that I do think we should require some documentation like we do on the rental licenses. And I'll give you a real-time example. So I went to renew my business license this year, and I went into the planning department. And I thought I was on time, and I was on time for this year, but I didn't even realize that I didn't get my license last year. So I paid for two years, but I also realized as a, you know, customer and as a business owner on the island here that I didn't get a notification that I had not renewed my license. I was, I could have put $0 or $10 or $100 on my application. I'd put what's on my Schedule C from '24. But I think we're, I think we've got an opportunity here because, to me, these business licenses and this revenue stream just doesn't track with the growth of businesses on the island. And I think we ought to look at maybe instituting a compliance like we do with the rental licenses. I think it would be a big opportunity for us.
Yeah. So if we can, Scott, we'll put that on the revenue slides here coming up in just a minute because we've got some suggestions or, again, from the Ad Hoc Preservation Committee. If you're okay, we'll just make a note to add that to it. So go ahead, John.
So in general, I'm okay with this, personally with what the assumptions are. I only have one question, maybe, Deborah, is that on the state accommodation tax, though, it looks high to me relative to where, I don't know if that's following the same formula or not. It looks like the budget is for a little over $4 million.
Right.
And that's higher than where we're forecasted to be. In last year, we were at 3.6 million. It just seems high to me for some reason. Do you see where I'm?
So we're forecasting 3.968?
We're forecasting 3.968, and we're above that. It's not the 98%, but it's higher than that. And relative to last year, it's pretty significantly higher.
So within that state revenue, there is some grant revenue because we're doing 51% of the FEMA mitigation grant that we're going to get. So that includes some grant revenue.
And that makes, if there's other stuff in there that wasn't in there in previous years, then it probably accounts for that. Other than that, and the other thing is the beach management fee. It looks low to me in terms of revenue. Last year, we got about $3 million. I know that included, though, some of the extra money we got in grants from the state. And I just don't know on apples to apples, this is about $2 million. And I guess we got some grants this year as well because we're forecasting 2.6. I just don't know on a raw basis. Assuming that you're taking 98% of whatever the beach-
The accommodation fees. Yes, sir. So we, and we are not budgeting any grant revenue in that fund.
All right, good enough.
But hopefully something will show up.
Yeah.
Possibly, yes. And I did, just from this morning in our State A-Tax meeting, I did average of the last six years, not even including this year because we've only had collected two quarters. And we are tracking to where the current budget has us tracking based on the average of the last six years.
Gotcha.
That includes 2019 pre-COVID.
So any other revenue comments or questions from an assumption standpoint? All right, Deborah, sorry. Thank you.
For our normal operating expenses, we are assuming-
I'm sorry, Deborah, I do have one. When we look at the, you talking about just all revenues, Philip, or the?
Just the assumptions, really.
Yeah, this is one, and it might be impacted on a later bullet, but I noticed on the property tax debt service, and this isn't necessarily in this year, but we have a, we grow from, it grows 70% from now until 2030. So we're at like $955,000 for fiscal year '26, but it grows to 1.6-plus million in 2030. And so that would be a 70% increase. And it looks like it's assuming we've got millage increases, and I don't think we voted on any millage increases. But if that's going to flow through to all of the fund balances and things of that nature, I think until we approve that, we might want to either pull that out or document or do something. But right now, it is showing, and if you look at '27 and '28, we go up significantly. Is there, do you know how that assumption was?
The assumption was made because council suggested last year that we have debt services for some of the larger projects that were coming up, like the fire truck, like the public works vehicles, the city hall renovations, or those were the three major things. And so in order to cover that debt, we assume that we're going to increase the debt service millage because that's how most of the debt is paid for, or through that-
And I don't disagree with your assumption. I'm just saying, I think for budgeting purpose, until council make that out for now, until we actually approve a millage increase. Because that will flow through to the fund balances.
Yes, that will flow through, and I will take it out, but we're also assuming debt in here too. So do you want me to take the debt out as well?
Well, I think we're going to get to the discussion about the building because I think we've done the, that's pushed out to '28.
Right. But there are other debts in here that affects that too. And I'll be happy to take it out, but it will make it look, it just would not be comparing apples to apples since we're assuming debt.
Assuming our best practice.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, from my perspective, I-
But again, this is future years. The debt service is in there for future years, and we're only approving 2026.
Right, but it's an assumption, we can do it either way, but it's an assumption of a fairly significant tax increase. And I don't think, I don't know that councils, you know, maybe we need to call the councils to see if they're on board with that because otherwise we'd be taking on, just taking on the debt.
That's absolutely fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Normal operating expenses, we are, we mostly remain flat, but, and some of them are higher than 3%, but the standard was 2.5% to 3%. For personnel costs, we're projecting $12 million. This includes a 2.5% cost of living increase as well as a 3% merit that will be effective January 1st. I know one of the questions that was asked last in one of the meetings was what the state was doing. We polled some of the other areas around Charleston, and the state does COLA. They do it at 7%. Sullivan Island, they are expecting to do 3.5 COLA with 1% merit. Edisto Beach is 4.5% COLA with a select merit. Kiowa Island is 8% to 10% of salary increase based on nothing, based, just 8% to 10% increase. And Mount Pleasant is 3% COLA plus 1% merit. We're also including a new position, which is called the Resilience and Beach Preservation Manager Position. And we also include provisions to increase the vacation buyback from 1,000 to 2,000. We have a few large drainage projects scheduled for next year. The two largest ones are on Palm Boulevard between 38th and 41st. We're projected at $1.85 million, and Ben Waterway projected at $2 million. Additionally, there's almost $300,000 in other ditch maintenance and comprehensive drainage. Now, we do already have $3.2 million in South Carolina State budgeted grants or the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant to cover some of those costs.
I think another way to say that is that we have 4.148 million in drainage projects for the year, and I think all but about $900,000 is covered through grants-
Right.
-of some sort. So that's what's, the net effect of our budget would be about $900,000.
Yeah.
To get 4 million.
To get 4 million, yeah.
And Douglas, I know we had this conversation last night around the Waterway Path. This FEMA mitigation grant is, was approved and funded, no, it's not funded, but approved at a six-foot elevation.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, absent something happening in DC, we should have this, because this one's reimbursable if I remember right.
That's correct. Yeah, we're actually in the process of working to get them to amend the scope to allow seven. Based on the news we got this week, we may not have to do that.
Yeah.
But there'd be money that came out of this, the capital, because we approved extra capital for the seven feet that didn't come out of it.
That's correct. And the overall cost of that project would go down if we went back to six.
And is there an assumption or expectation, if we go back to FEMA, we're just getting them to prove at seven, is there more funds?
No.
Douglas, think about it for a minute, though, man.
No, that was a question. Because it's on private property. The bulk of that is happening on private property. We heard back that they'll consider the scope, but they wouldn't consider additional funding. Does that make? Is it Jimmy's paper on the mic?
Yeah, Jimmy, right here. Getting the mic.
To John's point, that leaves $918,000 of unfunded from grants that's responsible, the city's responsible for. Amy, can you? The general fund capital purchases include the $100,000 that's being carried over from FY '25 flood mitigation on forest trails, $50,000 for adding office space upstairs conference room, as well as the police department purchases include $195,000. That is for 100, for three vehicles at $106,000.
Three vehicles for 195 ATV for 195?
I'm sorry, yes. Includes 195 for the three vehicles and the remaining 106 for the ATV's computer server, the speed radar and trailer, and then 50% of the public safety gate and 16 new computers to update them to Windows. The large purchases for the fire department include $395,000 for a high-water vehicle and the equipment needed for the high-water vehicle. If that, or the rescue boat, if the grant is not awarded, the grant was not awarded this year, so if they could either do, if approved, get the high-water vehicle or the rescue boat if a grant is awarded. Also budgeted $102,000 for the jet ski ATV thermal imaging camera and PV, PPV fans as well as the other half of the gate cost for the public safety building, public works.
On the fire department high-water vehicle, did I see something where Lenz is going to donate some money towards that? Is that correct?
I don't think so.
I have not heard that. Chief, Lenz has not offered to participate. I haven't heard that.
I thought I read something in the paper about it. I didn't heard other than that, okay. There's a possibility they could approach Lenz for some of it.
Well, they're putting it in the paper already. I think we should go ask.
And the other thing that we talked about was about potential grants for that. I know it's not in the budget. We shouldn't budget it, but certainly there's an opportunity, I think, on that 395 for that high-water vehicle to look for potential grants.
Yeah, and they're actively pursuing those, I think, as recently as this week.
Is this a good time to ask for more details on this high-water vehicle?
I think it's a good time. He's here.
Is the chief, fire chief, yeah, care to come and talk with us about it?
Deborah, let him use your, or take my mic.
So anything specific that you'd like me to touch on or just a brief overview?
Just an overview for the public, it's such a large number.
If I could add on, I think that we've had requests from some residents on the value of adding a high-water vehicle because they said there's never really been a flood over 18 inches that they ever recall of being here for 35, 40 years, and why would we need that vehicle when we've never had that happen in the past?
Sure, sure. Great question. So we have experienced some really good outcomes at Station 2, for example, with the stormwater that the city has invested in. That has helped us out immensely at Fire Station 2. We would get water up to our apparatus bay doors, and then in December, we had water two years ago during the flood about knee-deep that was in our apparatus bay. Because of that flooding, we're currently undergoing repairs to our apparatus bay doors. They are about $80,000 apiece. We're doing a fix to the bottom foot and a half of those doors because of the saltwater inundation. It had metal, it got through the metal and into the insulation and aided away. So we have had water, you know, greater depths than 18 inches that we've experienced, you know, at least at that Station 2 area. Some areas on Palm Boulevard have been impassable for our fire apparatus. So for us, we still want to serve our customers, and when they call, we want to be able to respond in a manner that doesn't damage our equipment, but also we can perform a high level of service. And the high-water vehicle in those instances would allow us to do that. It's not something that we need all the time, but it's something that we can utilize with the police department and public services in our stormwater infrastructure. We've talked with Robert Cerro and Donnie and Linton about that, about how we could partner up and also, you know, Chief Cornet with that platform. So it's just not for the fire department, and I would like to make that, make that clear, that we're able to cross-staff and cross-drain. Our neighbors, City of Charleston, Johns Island, which, you know, they protect, Kiowa and Seabrook, Mount Pleasant, all have invested in high-water vehicles, as has Sullivan's Island. So it's not something that we're stepping out and doing something, you know, different or contrary to what is best practice in the area. So anyway, stormwater infrastructure, love that. We've seen great return in our investment there already. I think we'll see it over time. And the high-water vehicle is basically a platform that will allow us to get our residents, who may be elderly, who may be a little, maybe difficult for them to get from their residents out in a medical emergency. Visitors, the same thing. If somebody's stranded in the vehicle, we can safely get them without damaging our equipment and also protect them. So it allows us to traverse those deep areas of water, put steps down to a residence, to a house, if they have a wheelchair, if they're wheelchair-bound, if they're not ambulatory for whatever reason. It's safer on our firefighters. It's safer for the patient to extricate them. So right now, we're not able to get to them. We would have to walk. We did that in December. We had a medical emergency on, I think it was around Fifth or Ninth in that area, and a garage door had caused a laceration to one of our citizens, and we had to walk, you know, in pretty deep water to get to them, try to get them into a pickup truck, transfer them from the pickup truck over to a hot spot to EMS. It was very laborious and put our firefighters and that patient more at risk than they could have been if we had a high-water vehicle. So high-water vehicles specifically designed to get those people in a safe, efficient manner, again, without damaging equipment. It typically looks like a flatbed truck that you would see, but it's covered over with, in the back, to keep the occupants out of the weather. Steps drop down. You also have a lift that drops down, looks like a Tommy lift. So if you have a wheelchair-bound person, if you have steps, you can take those steps directly to, let's say if it's an elevated home, drop the steps off the vehicle onto the steps of the house. In that way, that person would never have to step foot in the water, which is important because the water during those flood events, you know, might not be the most sanitary potentially. So it's a great opportunity for us. When I first interviewed for this position three years ago, it was actually on the assessment panel. Our department had identified that as a need prior to my arrival, and so we did a presentation to council on that high-water vehicle, you know, the merits. And it is a big, you know, piece of funding that's dedicated to that. So I thought that was interesting, and, you know, we're getting around to it, and we've been aggressively looking at grant opportunities where we can leverage the funding that we have. And one thing we looked at is with our request for the fireboat, is if we're able to get that fireboat, fire rescue boat under budget on our match, we could potentially use the remaining funds for the match for the high-water vehicle. So we might get two-for-one. But again, it's going to be dependent on grant opportunities.
Where would you put the high-water vehicle? I mean, do you have space inside?
We do. Now that we have about 1020 at the marina, we do have, that's freed up some space for it at Fire Station 2. Yes, sir.
How long is the useful life on this high-water vehicle?
Should be around 10 years, as long as we maintain it up to standard, have a good preventative maintenance program. More than likely, due to the use, we would have probably a 15-year lifespan if we're able to do good preventative maintenance and if we use it in the manner that, you know, the manufacturer recommends. So it's going to last longer than a fire truck. It doesn't have as many bells and whistles. So 10 to 15-year timeframe.
Is the manufacturing process similar to like a full-size fire truck that it could take nine months, maybe longer, maybe two years for the place to order before you get it?
Yes, sir.
How long would it take?
It would take between 12 and 18 months.
Would you consider straddling two years on this request since it's, to me, it's a pretty big number?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir. And we're working right now with Mount Pleasant. They have four high-water vehicles, and so we're looking at cross-staffing and training in a way so we bridge that gap so we'd still have, be able to provide that service until we had our own high-water vehicle dedicated to us. So absolutely, yes, sir. We'd be interested in, any of those funding opportunities are straddling, as you noted.
Thank you. Does Mount Pleasant have to deploy their high-water vehicles quite often, chief?
They do when they have storm events, when there's a named storm, they get the teams ready, when they have their mandatory callbacks. They've experienced like we have, you know, those, all of a sudden, those heavy rainstorms, and it comes out of nowhere. And so they have their teams, some of their police officers and firefighters are trained to that level, and they're on duty, and they will respond to their Leaven Road facility out on Highway 17, grab one of those trucks and put it in a centralized location so it's prepared to respond.
We talked last month about looking at the potential for a grant, and I think we have it listed there, except that was the high-water vehicle also, wasn't it, when your deputy chief was here?
Yep.
Are we pursuing that to see if there are grant dollars available for the high-water vehicle?
So the Port Security Grant, the FEMA Port Security Grant is for the marine firefighting and rescue boat. The manufacturers that we've been reaching out to, they are getting the grant information back to us about the other grant opportunities that are available. There are different grant opportunities that we may not be accessing now that might be available for the high-water vehicle. But the Port Security Grant would not fit for the high-water vehicle request. That's specifically a marine resource. But there are other opportunities out there we're working on, so we're still waiting to hear back from some of those manufacturers. In fact, some of the manufacturers have said, hey, this grant match fell through for this fire department. We have the truck already built. We'll give it to you at a much lower rate, but we're not able to move that quickly on it, and it's still a high-dollar amount. So the grant's still out there. You know, with the caveat, the federal grants right now, there's a lot, we mentioned, I think in Public Safety Committee meeting, a lot up in the air about that right now, a lot of uncertainty about federal grant funds. So, but speaking with the Coast Guard, at least we know the Port Security Grant, they said that FEMA grant- said that FEMA grant appears to be intact. That grant guidance should be out in the next two weeks and it should open in April and close in May.
Let's keep going.
Thank you, Chief.
Just for clarification, Councilmember, do you would like to see this spread between FY '26 and '27 or?
If it's the will of council, yes. It's not an end.
Yeah, I think if it's, if it's that long of a period, I mean, I don't think you put anything down on the vehicle you pay when it's delivered. And it's probably going to be a next fiscal year actual payment, but if it's 12 to 18 months.
Just move the whole thing out of here.
Just move it out a year. I mean, if, council would have to vote that they put that, put the order in, but it could be, payment could be moved out to next year, I think, based on the terms of the manufacturer.
Okay. So this was put in here originally because there was a truck available to purchase for FY '26 and that's why we put it in there?
Yeah, exactly. I do remember that. And I don't know if that's the case though or not, but if it's not.
Is it still available? We don't know?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it is available, do we want to keep it in '26? And if it's not available, we move it to '27? Does that sound like what we're?
So I think, you know, in speaking, we can do whatever, whatever council would like to do, but one strategy to take would be we would apply for the FEMA Port Security Grant in, at the end of April, May timeframe. We would find out if we were awarded that grant in the fall, about August, September. And based upon that, you know, our recommendation if we were awarded the grant would be to accept it. And then we would work with that manufacturer to see where we would dial in the price, exactly where it would be. And if there are leftover funds, you know, my recommendation would be to use that for, potentially for a high-water vehicle. If we don't get the grant, then we know we have more funds available for the high-water vehicle. We come to council and say, okay, we were not awarded that grant. We have this money that's already been approved in the budget. Well, how would council like to proceed if we have these grant opportunities available for the boat or for the high-water vehicle? But we find out pretty quickly from FEMA if we're awarded the Port Security Grant and so.
But either way, Chief, it's a, sounds like it's a fiscal '27 purchase.
Yes.
Unless, unless one just happens upon us.
Yes. And we can operationally bridge the gap with our resource partners through automatic and mutual aid until we have our own high-water vehicle. So that would be my recommendation to apply for the boat first, see if we get it or not, and then move on from there with the high-water vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
For Public Works, we are, the request is to purchase a flatbed dump truck at $6,000 to $8,000, as well as the continuation of, to transition the carts for new side loader at $100,000. And then there's $131,000 for provisions to move the electric lines underground and $40,000 for, this is just with failure for the, for four flood water pumps and a fuel dispenser.
Can I ask a question? Donnie, was the, was the rear-end loader in '26 too?
Yeah. It's coming up here because I want to ask about that when we get to that.
Okay.
It's in the debt line, Scott.
Okay.
For, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's just a rebudget because it's not going to be delivered until after the budget's passed.
And the plan was to, we had, we keep one of those even though we're going to do all the side loading or how is that?
Correct.
Thank you, Douglas.
Yeah, can we, because these are big-ticket items. Can we, I want to make sure we do all understand, you know, why we're keeping a rear loader somewhere at end of life. I mean, can we, because we've got one in '26, one in '27, and then multiples in future years.
That's correct.
So can we talk through what those purchases are, Donnie, and just what we're doing?
Come on back up.
All right, Mayor, repeat that.
So we've got a.
Are we getting all those trucks?
Yeah. We're taking on debt in '26 for a rear loader, I think. '27, a rear loader. And then we've got future.
'27 should be your first.
Side loader. And then we've got future trucks also. So what are we eventually winding up with, I guess is, what's the eventual inventory? And then what's end of life for us right now? We have four or five rear loaders today?
We have five.
Yeah.
And I would, I would suggest you go to probably at max three side loaders and keep at least two rear loaders, one for the miscellaneous and one for yard debris. If you get behind, you can put them in a packer.
So the purchase this year is for a rear loader? That's one of them's end of life for us, I guess?
And yes, and the life of the MAX, since I've been at Public Works, is 18 years. We've extended that from a 12-year cycle to about 18. And I'll just say this, it's with minimum maintenance, with the exception of taking them to the Hughes for their, for the motor side. So I think that's, MAX has been very good to the islands. When I got here, I had a Ford and an International and they were maintenance nightmares.
So again, we'll wind up with three side loaders, two rear loaders eventually.
But that's not.
Yes, and two flatbeds plus all of your stormwater.
The only thing for this year is a purchase of a rear loader. And right now, we've got it set up as debt and we can have that conversation here shortly, but.
This year being next fiscal year.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Come half fiscal year.
And there, I think you said a rear loader and then another rear loader, which I think, I think it's a rear loader.
And a side loader.
And then, and then the side loader.
'27.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right.
And then when's the next one?
After.
The 10-year plan, I think it's about '28 or '29.
Yeah. Originally, in our discussions with Desiree, it was two in one year, but she backed it out to two in consecutive years, one in consecutive years.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it is to follow the end of the life of the preceding truck. So.
It coincides with you deploying the new cans too.
Yeah. It's correct.
Yeah. Donnie, we've got '29, '30, '31, and '33. We've got additional truck purchases.
And that gets you to a full five new, pretty much, correct?
Do we need to bring the side loaders in quicker? Are we deploying the cans in two years? Will we have the cans, but not the side loaders?
Yeah, we are deploying the cans over three years, starting this year. So we will, and we do have to, because we would want to be able to use the side, the first side loader at every, pretty much every house. So we, we initially talked about, could we only put the cans where the side loader's going to be? But in having that discussion, the side loader has the ability to go, to go the entire island. So we wanted all the cans to be new when the side loader showed up, but it will not be, we won't have all the side loaders that we ultimately we have until a number of years out. So.
The new cans can be used either way.
That's correct.
It's like I have a new can.
Yeah, it'll work either way.
Working, yeah. So we can get the cans first, cart before the horse.
Yeah.
So to speak.
Did you find it?
Yeah.
And I think the question was asked the other day about the lifespan of the carts. And again, it was, they came here in '91 and we still have them. So you're looking at 30-plus years per cart.
I've still got my original one from '91.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you, Donnie. Recreation Department capital purchases include $220,000 for reconstructing two tennis courts and the tennis fencing. But to reconstruct the tennis courts, it's $190,000 and then the fencing is 30. There's $6,000 to $8,000 in, in the budget for replacement of scoreboards if failed, soccer goals, fencing for the soccer field, flooring for the offices and lobby, and then lights for the hallway and lobby. And all this breakdown is, is on the capital schedule.
A question about the tennis courts?
When we get there. Yes, sir.
Where are they going to be located?
Same place.
Same spot.
There's resurf, they're re.
They're just redoing the ones we have?
Yes. It's a little bit more than a resurfacing. It's their, they've been, they've been resurfaced a number of times and this is more of a redoing because that way the, hopefully the resurfacing will last longer because they've been cracking.
Sounds right, Carrie.
That is correct.
She got it right.
Capital purchases for Front Beach includes $25,000 for benches and $70,000 to repair the sidewalk on Ocean between 10th and 14th. The beach preservation includes a little over a million dollars to replace and repair or add dune walkways, mobi mats, design and permitting for the next large off-scale project. And these costs are also broken down so you can see exactly what makes up that million dollars in the beach preservation fund. For Marina, we are planning.
Quick question on the beach, and maybe this to Douglas. Douglas, I think last night I heard you talk about the shoal management and I think it was a 25% split for us.
That's correct.
And in the budget, I think it's a, it's different. I think we have a $350,000 number in there versus 175 or whatever that number would be.
It was a 50% split in the budget.
Yeah.
45, 55, so.
I know that this current shoal management project that's, that we're seeking bids like
this week for has that 25, 75 split.
Yeah.
But I'm not positive about the, the, this is talking about the second, if needed, shoal management project and maybe that does have a different split.
I don't think we have two in our, we have two in our budget or?
Well, the, the permit is for two if we needed to do two and, and I'm thinking that there, there is some money in there if we needed to go, if we needed to do that second project.
I think it's on page 107. Yeah, I think this is the one.
Can I go to 107?
Yeah, I think that's the one that's under, or getting ready to get underway right now.
Oh.
Oh, maybe not. I don't know.
It's a different file.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on line 294. It says 55% cost shared with WDC. And I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's for today, but I'm wondering when we're going to have that conversation about those assumptions to the 45, 55.
You see the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's in there at, is that number 350?
Yeah, 187 is definitely 75%. That, that number in the first budget, I'm thinking the 350 is 55%.
Yeah, the, the 87 is from, 187 is for this year for FY '25?
That's correct.
Um.
And that's a, that's a $750,000.
But are we going to spend that this fiscal year?
Yes.
Probably. Is it even necessary then for the 350 to be in there?
So that, I mean, that's, you know, that is part of this being very proactive with the, with the, we will have the permit. The permit very specifically allows us to do two projects. That would be kind of a worst-case scenario if we, if we had to do that second shoal management project before the large-scale renourishment.
Now, that 187 is 25% cost share with Wild Dunes.
Okay.
From this year's budget. That's 25% up.
Well, the question is about the 350 though.
I think the 350 is 55%.
Should it be 55 or 25?
So I, I think to Scott's point, we need to have the discussion. It's my understanding that we used historical practice to establish our budget for this project, the 25, 75. We, after doing kind of the, the process that we did with the Beach Ad-Hoc Committee and figuring out the level of participation that Wild Dunes has on our beach preservation fund, that, and, and the property tax share, that the actual split of their contribution, that they're generating 45% of those funds, therefore, the city's contribution would be up to 45%, leaving 55% for Wild Dunes. So that is, that is, that's, I don't know that we've ever fully kind of memorialized that percentage, but I think you're right. We need to have that discussion and conversation.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, it may seem equitable and everything and I'm still wondering, do we need to get an opinion on what, I mean, that seems pretty fair in many regards, but do we need to get an opinion on whether or not we can use these funds for the, for the private beach restorations? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I, yes, I, I would be shocked to hear that we cannot use them, especially given that they're generated from those properties. We could certainly get that opinion. I'd be shocked if we could not use the beach preservation.
On the, on the previous projects, we, we, I think the city contributed like 12% and 18%.
That's correct, 18%.
Wasn't that based on the, that restoration being outside the gate on that stretch of beach?
It was really based on the city not having the funds and I think kind of what you're, what you're alluding to correctly is the federal and the state funding.
Also contributed.
Well, they contributed and they would not contribute beyond what was considered public in their mind. So there was kind of a line in the sand, literally, for where state and federal money could be, could be spent. And I think at the time, the city was of the mindset, we did not have a beach preservation fee fund. And I think it was, this is, this is what we can afford to contribute and that, that's result, what the result was of that money.
Could I request that, I guess maybe for a future meeting, not here, but we get some documentation, just redocument maybe the last several years of the ATAC split between inside Wild Dunes and outside? And then maybe we have a council discussion on, you know, what we, what we feel is fair and equitable and, and we can maybe get it documented with Wild Dunes.
And I think, Deborah, you have property tax, ATAC, hospitality, I mean, all that you had broken down, I think, right? In and out.
We don't have it for multiple years.
Right.
We have it kind of in a.
Most recent, most current snapshot.
And I think we're just looking kind of project, near-term project by project, not 10 years down the road kind of thing.
Okay. Okay. This, this budget also includes $1.5 million for the dredging that's supposed to take place at the Marina, as well as $300,000, $300,000 for public green space and to resurface the city's portion of the parking lot. That $1.5 million for dredging will be funded by the SCPRT Harbor Dredging Grant that was received in 2023. Total debt service for this FY '26 budget is $1.7 million, which $71,000 is new debt for the rear loader. And you can see the breakdown of what makes up that 1.7 on our 10-year capital. Each department has provisions for facility maintenance. It's usually about 1% of the value of the building, insured value of the building. This totals to $733,000, which 250 of that is for maintenance on City Hall to repair, to do some of the major repairs and maintenance that's needed for this building to keep it safe and for falling down.
Deborah, can we go back one line? Sorry, on the debt.
Deborah, can we go back one line? Sorry, on the debt service for this year. I know we're making an assumption that we're going to use debt for that public works rear loader, which is a $300,000, $320,000 purchase?
Yes, I think. Let me get there.
And we're assuming a loan rate of 4%. I would be of mind to pay cash, but that's just me.
I could support that.
Yep. I mean, we're earning barely over 4 in our interest rate right now, so it's not like we've got margin of any kind. Anybody, Rusty or Jimmy, y'all have thoughts around that?
Cash is king.
Yeah. I mean, it's not- and you're only talking about doing it for five years.
Yeah.
At worst, it's a wash.
Yeah. I think we flop that one to pay cash.
Okay.
And on the future ones, leave them, it's because we have-
You've got 27. Right now, you've got funding, the future years, you've got cash assumption.
Okay, so just this one, move the cash.
We'll tackle next year when we get there.
Okay.
Well, the side loader also is in the debt, but any future- start next year, but we can-
We'll leave it as debt.
Talk about it next year.
Leave it as debt.
The next one, yeah.
Yeah, that's 410.
410 for the side loader. I'd take cash for that, we do, but we can see where we are now.
Yeah, I would too. If we solve for the beach.
Well, I mean, we take it out now, and Scott, to your point, see what that plus other changes that we're going to- what's going to affect our fund balances.
Yeah.
I'd take the 27 one to cash, too, personally.
The first side loader.
First side loader.
You got that?
Okay. FY '27 side. 32.
I mean, if there's a big change in interest rates, one way or the other, we can revisit it when we do fiscal '27.
I have a question.
Yeah.
There's been some discussion of the sidewalk extension in front of the public's safety building to Ocean Boulevard. Is that anywhere in this budget? I don't see it. Or is that county money?
That's county money. Assuming it happens, I mean, we've been waiting on the 21st Avenue for 30 years.
It's kind of an uproar down there. A lot of people, Douglas knows, we talked about it, but it's all county money.
Yes.
Figured as much, but I wanted people to know.
Did Jane join us or not?
No.
Okay. Next page is kind of for her.
Yeah, for Jane.
One-page budget summary. Go ahead, Deborah.
So, reference page 32 on your packet, please.
Is that what this is?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I got.
Right. All right, do you want to? This is- okay. So, page 32 on the packet, and this breaks down the revenues by fund, as well as the expenses, any transfers that we're anticipating, and our fund balance. So, we are projecting to start FY '26 with a fund balance of $47 million, and end FY ' '26 with a fund balance of $48 million.
Deborah and Douglas, could you do me a favor offline? Can you check, I think for the first five projected beginning fund balances, I think it might have picked up 23 as the ending balance instead of 24, and I think that might get you another $3 million in the fund balance. So, that's the good news.
The, what you said, the gaining balance?
Yeah, there's like the 6930, the 13979, the 3880, 1268, and all the way over to state ATACs, I think it picked up 23 instead of 24.
Got it.
So, we might pick up $3 million bucks there. I think that'll float on page 35 and 38, too.
Can you explain what these- I don't know what this 20- the 25% turn- I'm wondering what the logic is on those next couple of lines.
Oh, yeah, don't look at that page. Look at page 32 of your packet, please.
That's why you were trying to take this.
Oh, sorry.
That's information that should have been here in this old information.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So, disregard.
Yes, please. And you're saying that the beginning fund balance is picking up FY '23's ending balance?
Yeah, so the general fund, where it says 6930, I think that should be 7188. You got a six- almost $700,000 increase in the capital projects fund. The 3880 goes to 4657, and so on and so forth across the way there. So, you pick up some money, I think.
Okay, I'll double-check that.
And I can show you where that is if you can.
So, that's the end of fund balance for FY '23. See, I'm not following that, because if I look at- if you look at page 57-
Well, if you go to on your spreadsheet, it's in the spreadsheet. You picked up the column M instead of column N in the- in your Excel. It's just one- it's just one column off, and it just picked up FY '23 start.
For this spreadsheet, for page 32?
Yeah. Pretty sure.
So, if you look at page 57, 57's forecast fund balance, ending fund balance, says 6.9.
On which page?
57.
Is it 56 or 57?
57.
Line 322.
Line 322, the forecast fund balance is ending at 6.930. So, I'm not sure where the- I mean, I can look, but I don't see that on- I can look in the Excel spreadsheet, but based on the general fund detail page, the forecast in column R, line 322, is 6.930. Which is up on the screen. Can you make that bigger, Douglas?
Yeah, because I'll foster. Pretty sure.
Yeah, hopefully I'm wrong. But I'll double-check the spreadsheet, but that's what the detail is saying, so I'm not- I can't answer that question right now, because I don't have it in Excel in front of me, but this is what the detail is saying.
Did you- so, Scott, will you just tell us where you-
Yeah, I can show you on the spreadsheet afterwards, yeah. We can take that offline.
Okay.
So, Deborah, what else for fiscal '26 budget? I think your next two slides are future world.
Anything else for fiscal '26?
Which one, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Anything else for fiscal '26?
Um, I want to- yes, let's look at the capital pages, because I think we went through these before, but I just want to make sure that we're okay with these. I think we went through these on one of the workshops, but just want to make sure. Okay, that starts on page?
Page number-
97.
Here's different, man.
You're talking 97 of the meeting packet, not just the budget?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, of the- that's the budget.
I know, but the meeting packet includes all the stuff from this morning.
Oh.
So, Mayor, I can-
Tim, I can tell you the math. Sorry, tell me what your heading is, 10-year capital plan for general.
Yes, 10-year capital plan.
So, you got to subtract 31 from what Deborah says the page number is, so 66? 66 on yours?
Mine's showing 97, but I got her mine from her, so I don't-
Right. Yeah, keep rocking.
Okay, so, these are all-
Yeah, it's page 66 of your budget, if you just have the budget spreadsheet, not the packet.
These, if you look at column J, these are all the requests that we just went over, and I just want to make sure that there isn't anything else that's jumping out at council that we need to change. I know we talked about the high-water vehicle that we will move over, and that will also move the equipment, because that's associated with it, and then we will change the debt on page.
Yeah, Deborah, I think we've talked about everything in this column, right?
Right, 109, we would change the debt and put that into cash, paying cash for that. So, I just want to make sure, as you flip through it, you don't- there aren't any other observations or concerns in there, but we just discussed everything that's in there. But this actually breaks down some of those larger numbers that we talked about.
Yeah, by project.
Yeah. And if, Scott, if you want to look, Councilman Pierce, if you want to look at the beach preservation and make sure that that is-
I did have one question, and I know that's out in '27, but we were talking about that 45, 55 split, and what the mobilization was split equally, and I think what that does is that if you, you know, allocate it, the cubic yard cost is allocated per cubic yard, but the mobilization was equal. I think if we look at it, what's going to happen is the south end sand is going to be about three bucks cubic yard more than the north end sand on a cubic yard perspective, so maybe we should take all the costs and just allocate it based on cubic yard deployment, including the deployment.
We can do that.
I think it'll save us about a-
We can do that, but from my understanding, it would cost us $5 million to get it here, regardless if we were doing both projects at the same time or not.
I'm just talking about allocating the cost, because the cost is- we did 45, 55 on the sand, but we did it based on the cubic yards.
That's correct.
But we did a 50, 50 split on the mobilization. So, what happens is 2, 2.5 million gets laid on 560,000 cubic yards on the south. That same 2.5 million gets laid on 1.2 million cubic yards up on the north. So, I'm suggesting that we allocate it based on where the sand's going.
The logic there is we have two projects. Each project would have to pay full mobilization if they did it independent of the other, so-
You're splitting it, yeah.
So, we're- if they were to choose to not participate, we would pay 100%, then we just split it by virtue of the fact that there are two projects. Each project needs mobilization, but that's how we thought it was most fair.
I think allocating where the sand's going, if it's one project, it's one project. That would be my suggestion.
I think all this has to be worked out with- I mean, we've not had any discussions, our agreements, really, with Wild Dunes on any of this, right?
That's correct. Only, you know, our high level-
And I think that's your point earlier, Scott, that we, I mean, as a next step, we need to kind of pull all that data together and have that discussion, and as council agree on kind of what the split is going forward.
I mean, you've had higher-level conversations on the split.
Yes.
And, yeah, so we can get council the current split of revenues in and out of the gate. That's an easy one.
Okay.
What is council's desire? So, '26 with pretty minor changes feels decent, based on feedback. I feel like, I mean, we need a session, and we can do some of it today if you want, on this future revenue number that came out of the ad hoc preservation committee. Would we like a separate workshop to hit on that, in addition to the Wild Dunes pieces that you want to see, is that worthy kind of conversation, kind of take that focus to that?
I mean, I personally think we need to have a serious conversation around those revenue opportunities on what we need to do and any expense cuts, because, I mean, I just did a high-level look at it, and if you look just at our general fund since 2021, our revenues are up 21%, and our costs are up, our expenses are up 55%. I mean, back in '21, we were putting 1.18 out of the general fund, and this year's budget, we're having to put in 1.6 million, so there's a big shift in the general fund finances in terms of the revenue versus expenses and how they've kind of outgrown each other. It's same story, though, for all of our funds. If you look at, you know, since '21, revenues are up 35%, our expenses are up 56%, so our expenses are certainly outpacing our revenue growth, and that's not a long-term good place to be in. I think even if you look at the primary driver, a lot of that has been around our personnel costs. I mean, in our general government, since '23, it's up 53%. Last- just over last year, in one year, going from last year to this year, our general personnel costs are up 39%. Overall, personnel costs up 25% since '23 and up 7% this year. So, I think we have to have a serious conversation around some of those revenue items and some of the expense items. I think we've talked about pushing some of that expense out even during this meeting, and maybe that has a benefit to it, but I'd like to see it rolled up again, and then let's have another conversation on how we get things kind of more balanced in terms of some of the revenue opportunities.
And I'm hoping to have an extra, you know, session if we need to. I'd rather not wait till the, you know, late April, May, June timeframe. I think this- however quickly we can turn around these updates and create a new package, sooner rather than later, but not longer.
Yeah, I don't think there's much on '26 that's going to change. We're really talking future years from a revenue standpoint.
Well, we can look at the revenue opportunities to see if council wishes to add any of these.
I mean, that's the next session. That's a separate session to take your next two slides around the revenue opportunities.
Yes, we're going to talk about that today?
No.
No?
That's the next session.
Okay.
I would say when we go into that session, if- I don't know if these approximate revenue benefits from each of the items are still accurate, but just to make sure they're the latest up-to-date thinking, like, and have more information of where our current- like, if you take business license, where's our current business license, if there's any kind of benchmarking to some of the surrounding communities, and, you know, a little bit more detail around some of those, so we can make good decisions around those would be helpful.
We did benchmark them all kind of about a year ago, and we can-
So, if we could bring all that or send that back up.
Pull it together.
Yeah.
Our next council meeting is the 25th. Is there that week good, bad, or indifferent? Deborah?
That could work.
What, that week of the 24th?
Yes, that's fine.
Give you enough time, or?
Yes, yes, sir.
What if we looked at the 26th, at the Wednesday?
Yeah, good.
Should work.
Is there anything else on the city calendar?
Sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, Amy, any of court that day, or probably last Wednesday? You do not?
We're clear.
Okay. 1 o'clock?
Me.
Rusty, Jimmy, 1 o'clock?
24?
6.
26.
Wednesday, the 26th. So, Mayor, we'll go- we'll do these updates that we've talked about today. We'll do revenue conversation. You want to have the Wild Dunes, that kind of ate the split between inside-outside, have that conversation then? What other points we want to be ready for?
Can I ask for- last year, we had the expense by category slides, and I think that- Can I ask for, last year we had the expense by category slides, and I think that there's that pie in the list, and I, maybe I missed it in this packet, I think it's in the sheet somewhere, but I didn't see it.
I know that's in there.
And, you know, I'll give you an example, like, for, you know, IT category, the IT category's gone from probably zero to 600,000 now, and I think visibility by category, you know, those kinds of things might help us home in on some opportunities, or go out for bid, or, you know, these kinds of things where we might be able to, you know, shore up some of the, I think telecom's a couple hundred thousand, and stuff like that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Off record at 2:03.